Six o'clock, the meeting is now called to order. Ms. Manin, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
And Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vena Rodriguez is absent.
Cesar Nevadas?
Here.
Ralph Turan?
Here.
Mayor Lilia Garcia?
Here.
Victor Perez?
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo is absent. For the record, Mr. Vena Rodriguez will be arriving at the meeting at six oh one.
Do we have any speakers?
Public comment, Margie Perez. No speakers.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vena Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo is absent.
Item number nine, public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, creating social host underage drinking accountability related to underage consumption of alcohol and creating a civil offense and penalties for violations. Six oh two, public hearing is now open. Six oh two, public hearing is now closed. Item number ten, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, creating social host underage drinking accountability related to underage consumption of alcohol and creating a civil offense and penalties for violations.
May I, Mayor, make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance creating social host underage drinking accountability?
Second.
Vena Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo is absent.
Item number eleven, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of track ten dash one, block three, Socorro Grant, ten nine seven four, East Bird Road, from R one, single-family residential to R two, medium-density residential, for the purpose of developing a multifamily development on the subject property. Six oh four, public hearing is now open.
Ms. Perez?
Just an update on this item, as you know, I'm not opposed to it, but I just wanted clarification and I wanted to know what was the update on it. If there was any update, because I know the gentleman had not come in and given plans or anything like that, so... So I don't know what the update is on.
In the second item, what's the right to the... Six oh four, public hearing is now closed. Item number twelve, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of track ten dash one, block three, Socorro Grant, ten nine seven four, East Bird Road, from R one, single-family residential to R two, medium-density residential, for the purpose of developing a multifamily development on the subject property.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here representing the planning and zoning department. This item was tabled back on June twenty first, pending the contact of the property owner. Mr. Job Terraza, the building official, did try to get a hold of the owner. Unfortunately, we never got a call back or heard anything from him. We don't have any answer for you as far as what his plans are with this project.
Correct, so it was tabled because the Planning and Zoning Commission had requested more information and exactly what he was planning on doing in his property. However, he never contacted us back, so it had to go through the process either way, but he was in prison for any of the public hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they're recommending denial. City staff is recommending approval just because there are other R two within the area.
Mr. Perez?
So, was a certified letter sent to the property owner just to try and make sure that contact was made?
Correct, I mean, we have extended documentation to prove that we have tried contacting him and he just...
What if we decide to... Yeah, if we decide to deny it, what would be the impact? Because if I'm the property owner and I'm developing, you know, I'm there trying to answer the questions to get it approved.
Mm-hmm. Jim?
And that's not happened.
The whole context of zoning changes, and keep in mind, right now, it's just a zoning change. It's not a particular development.
Right.
So you have to kind of consider it the abstract. But the talisman for zoning changes is have the conditions in the area changed. And really, that's all you have to assess. If the conditions haven't changed enough to justify a zoning change, there's really nothing you can do.
Mr. Residius?
So, Mr. Perez, I've always said this, that, you know, I don't want to be in a predicament where we do an inverse domain, which is if we allow this individual... As far as I remember, what this project was going to be, was going to be fifteen homes or more, if I recall, and the street is very narrow, that's why the recommendation was to deny because of that, because it was going to put too many people in that narrow street. So I've always said, and I gave the option last time, is that we don't know. He has failed to contact the city to really know his intentions of it. What I've always said is that if we do allow a zoning change, therefore, if he complies, if he complies with all our ordinances, we cannot tell him, no, you cannot do that amount of apartments. We can ask, but remember, if he complies with our ordinances, then there's nothing we can do except ask nicely. And it's whether up to him or not, whether he wants to comply with our request. So my suggestion for this item is, because he hasn't let us know his intentions, and the intention that we was brought into the planning and zoning was to put those kind of units in there. It's going to create a traffic, a lot of volume in that street. So I will make the suggestion that we don't approve it, you know, and my motion would be to deny the zoning change. Because therefore, he has... He's still going to stay with his property, but yet, he's not going to be able to come back to us and say, oh, well, because we didn't give him the zone change, so therefore, he doesn't have to follow and comply with our rules and regulations in our zonings, so therefore, we are not liable for anything. So my recommendation would be to deny. And my motion is to deny.
Second.
Vena Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo is absent.
Item number thirteen, discussion and action on approving the unaudited financial reports for May two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve the unaudited financial reports for May two thousand eighteen?
Second.
Vena Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action on approving the issuance of the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, annual financial report by Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC.
Make a motion to approve?
Second for discussion.
Good, correct.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor, and Council. I've got a...
You can leave him here, we'll pass him down.
Thank you.
The audit draft I also have, in case you would like to have a copy, I believe you have already...
Can you make sure that you speak into the micro?
How's this? Okay, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council members, thank you for allowing us to present. My name is Michael White, I am the partner in charge of the El Paso office for Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. We're a regional firm, my partner Danny Martinez, the audit partner in charge of the audit, could not be here this evening, so I will be presenting in his place. And what I passed out for you all was the presentation of the financial statement audit, and it's basically the information that we are required to present to council for your knowledge and also for any discussion purposes. The audit is done, we're pending some information from some attorneys, but once we have that, we should be okay, we're confident that it shouldn't change the numbers. So what you have, what the audit you have, there shouldn't be any other changes to it. So we're going to go ahead and present and see if you have any questions, and then we'll take it from there. Okay, so on page two, it's a little bit of a timeline. We had sent our engagement letter earlier in this year, we got it back in October, and then going over the holidays and coming into the new year, we started our planning towards the end of February. In that period, we're sending all our requests to management to get us the information we need for our test and field work, which we came down and did back in April, was very successful. When we have all the information up front, ready to go, all the samples, it allows us to come in, do our work, process through, ask our questions, and get out. So we did it in less than a week's time, so that was very good. And then, once we're done with the field work, then we'll go over some... If we have any issues or concerns, we'll discuss with at that time. This year also, we did an IT review that we will start doing from this point on also. And we had our report, our independent report issued as of May first, and then we delivered the financials last week, and now we're presenting to you all this week. That's a little bit of a timeline on the financials and the whole audit process, which is about norm. It usually takes months to, from start to finish, to present a governmental audit. What we wanted to, what we are required to discuss is just some of the different areas of the audit and the responsibility of the auditor and the responsibility of management, and then just to have some highlights in between. For example, on the audit, when we're all said and done, you all received a non-modified opinion. That's the best opinion that you could get, in other words, everything was in compliance. We had known, the financials were presented in a format and reasonable. They were presented fairly in accordance with accounting standards that we're supposed to follow, so you guys got the best opinion that you could get. When we do an audit, our responsibility is to express the opinion, and we follow generally accepted accounting procedures and governmental procedures, and we want to obtain a reasonable assurance. No one can get absolute one hundred percent assurance, but through our test work and field work and interviews, we obtained a reasonable assurance allowing us to give you that opinion. So that's very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
On page three, some highlights on the financial statements themselves, the statement and deposition, basically your assets and liabilities of the city. We had some decrease in cash, restricted cash and cash equivalents, about one hundred and sixty compared to last year. I'll always be comparing to the prior year, but it's basically, you know, you guys got the new bond, the refinance, and now we're spending the money, you know, so now we're going through our processes. So that was one of the reasons. We did have a decrease in liabilities as well, which is excellent, about one million, and that is related, again, to paying down debt. So that's very good for the city.
Can you repeat that again?
I'm sorry?
It was excellent, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah, when we have a... Paying down debt is always fantastic, you know, so, yes, sir. On the statement of activities, on revenue and support and expenses, because of the new bond and changes, we do have a slight decrease in revenues related largely to capital grants and contributions. I know those fluctuate throughout years, and expenditures did go up about seven hundred thousand only because of the just day-to-day running of the government. And, you know, we have salary increases and the capital expenditures that we're doing related to the bond issuance. All of that relates to the increase, so we got some money, so now we're spending it, and that's what it relates to. The major areas that we audited, of course, we audited all the financials, but we, you know, some focuses, accounts receivable was one. We made sure we gained an understanding of different revenue types that the city receives. We did test work on revenues, we did walkthroughs, make sure that we understood the different revenue collections, you know, municipality warrants, and performed extensive procedures over the municipality and the warrant. So every year, auditors will have, you will go through different aspects, and it'll be at the auditor's discretion which areas to focus on. This was one that we focused on this year. And we perform procedures as the compliance with federal and state requirements for grants that we reviewed. On the expenditures and payroll, which is another major area that we audited, we reviewed different agreements entered into during the fiscal year. We gained an understanding of the expenditures and tested for reasonableness over the fiscal years. In other words, we did samples, we did testing, we looked at invoices, we asked questions on processes, we reviewed processes documented, what you got written down. And then, we looked at the effectiveness of the control controls of the payroll cycles, and we have some recommendations that we'll discuss on the next couple of pages. But overall, we had enough and we were comfortable to issue the unmodified opinion. On page four, this is communication with governing body. This is areas that we're required to talk to as your auditors, to council and to mayor. Matters to be communicated, and then our responses to each. Our responsibility, again, is to go through our test work and our process to issue an opinion on the financials. Manager's responsibility really is to present the financials, the information, have people that are knowledgeable that can help us with our process, make sure that we have all the documentation and internal controls in place so that we can review and test them. Everything went well in those aspects. We always do a planning and scope and timing of the audit, and sometimes, when things don't go well, we'll have to make changes through the process and the timing. In this case, we didn't have to do any changes, everything went really well, especially during our field work. So we had no alterations. On page five, we, you know, in every accounting process and systems, there's judgments and estimations in accounting and the day-to-day activity. So we review the mentality of those judgments and those processes, you know, for example, depreciation, amortization, items of that source that you'll have to do a judgment call. And then, we determine whether the mentality and the processes to become those, to calculate those estimations, are they reasonable, are they reliable, are they standard for your type of industry and entity and so forth, and all the adjustments and documented processes that were there were good. The mentality used and the judgments identified were all within compliance, so we just have to express that, we looked at that, and we didn't have any issues with any of the determinations of estimations. On the significant accounting policies, including, we look at those policies procedures. Auditors love documented accounting procedures, we like to look to see what the requirements are internally, and then we'll go test against them. As far as compliance with governmental standards, you guys have good policies and procedures. There's always room for improvement, which we'll discuss later, but as far as the standards needed for compliance, you guys are right on, okay? This is good stuff, right?
Yeah, very, very good stuff.
Okay, on page six, some matters that we need to communicate. When we have issues, difficulties encountered in the audit, any disagreements with management, any other findings or issues that are noted other than what we're going to discuss, and matters arising from the audit that were discussed with correspondence or other management, we need to discuss all that with you all, but we didn't, we want to note that we didn't have any difficulties encountered in the audit. It went well, we didn't have any disagreements with management, it was a good team to work with and very cooperative, and, you know, so we had no notes on any of those that we had to report to council. On the corrected and unrecorded, uncorrected statement, part of the audit is, you know, we're going through the numbers, we're looking at support, sometimes you'll run into adjustments that need to be added. We'll discuss them with management, they'll be agreed upon, and then some adjustments will be recorded because it has to be in compliance with standards, and some of them will fall under materiality. In other words, you guys have the choice to make the adjustment, but we had a couple. One related to insurance proceeds, just a misclassification that was corrected, easily corrected. Another one with a payroll accrual that just related to some, just a mishap there also. And in municipality court, there's some tweaks that we can do there to kind of improve on the process. Every audit goes through this process, and there's no audit that goes through that doesn't have any issues, which is why you have the audit, you have the audit, one, to make sure you're in compliance, two, that the financials are presented reasonably, and then, three, to look for opportunities to improve. I mean, if you have the mentality to always want to improve, it really works out well with the auditor because then we can really dig in and see where else we can help the city of Socorro improve. If we go to page seven, major issues discussed with management prior to retention, we didn't have any noted. Consultation with other accountants, sometimes you might need a second or third opinion, and we aren't aware of any consultation with other accountants. Written representation, at the end of every audit, there's a management representation letter that is issued from the city to the auditor, basically saying, you gave us everything we needed, you provided all the support, you know, we're transparent and we didn't have anything out. We got that letter from you all, so thank you. And then, internal control deficiencies, we have some that we want to discuss and help the city improve, and that'll come up in a little bit. We didn't have any issues with fraud or illegal activities, illegal acts. We were not aware of any issues with fraud or illegal acts, so that's fantastic. We weren't unaware of any during our process of the audit. If we were aware of some, we would notify you right away, but we did not run across or cross any issues. Other information in the documents contained in the audit, normally, sometimes the audits will come with a management letter or a management disclosure or some other information. There wasn't any in this case, so we didn't have to review. If there were, we would review that information to make sure that it was in compliance with the audit and the numbers were the same, and we weren't misquoting any information. But in this case, there weren't any, so we could just skip that altogether. Okay, we go to page eight now. These are just some examples of the policies, judgments, and sensitive estimates that we were disclosing earlier. For example, depreciation is one, allowances for receivables is another, and this is just a little bit more of information on it. Some things that we do want to note, on the municipal court warrants, the receivables, you know, those are sometimes tough to collect, so we always want an allowance on the books to help give you a more true number as far as what's collectability. You know, if I got a hundred thousand in warrants outstanding and my chance of getting twenty percent of it is reality, we want to put an allowance in there of eighty percent, so it shows a real, true number, so we're not misleading our readers of the financial statements. So we do, there is an allowance on, and we are recording it. The only thing we're looking for, and auditors, again, are all big about policy and documented processes, if we could have an official policy that's, you know, on paper, that says this is how we determine our estimate for allowance for a collectible warrants, that's all we're saying here, is maybe we add that to our already list of policies procedures, just throw another one in there to continue to improve our policies and procedures. On the useful life of depreciation and capital assets, that's basically looking at the assets that you have, the city has, and, you know, the depreciation schedules that are used to determine the value and the life of those assets. Those are all judgment calls, you know, it could all depend, and then, the policy that you all have is appropriate, it's fine, maybe we look at it a little bit more just to make sure that everything's in there, including impairment of assets, you know, if I've got a truck that got destroyed, am I properly recording the disposal of that vehicle also? It's something that we can look at. But what you have documented already, it's working, it's under compliance, it's just to make sure we can, see if we could add any more information to that policy. On the last one, the deferred outflows of resources related to loss and extension debt... Oh, that's what I was just talking about. No, no, actually, this relates to when you did the issue bond, you have your new rate and what's on the financials at the time. There is a policy that's appropriate and proper on the books, on the policies, but the difference between the two, which is amortized, it's just making sure that our policy relates to that and that the information on there is accurate. But these three are examples of estimation and judgment calls, and again, the auditors did not feel that we didn't have anything unappropriate, and then we just highlight a few items where we can maybe tweak it to make it better. As far as compliance, you guys are good, okay? On page nine, the municipal court warrants, this was a proposed but unrecorded journal entry, and this basically relates to when we issue a warrant, some of the money is for the city and some of the money is for the state. And just making sure that when we're recording the receivable, that we're also recording the payable to the state at the same time, so we don't expect, you know, if it's a hundred dollar warrant and thirty of it is ours and seventy of it is the state, that we have that appropriately on the financials. Because the amount was immaterial, we went ahead and just recommended, and then it was a choice, but it's something to look into on the software that you're using for warrants and court orders, and just to make sure that it's set up correctly to maybe record that better in the future. Again, no issues from the audit's perspective, but just an opportunity to make it better. Okay, so page ten, so every audit that we perform, we always try to find opportunities for improvement. Also, too, where our job is to also find if there's an area that we need to let council know so that they could, you know, if there's a problem or an issue, you want to know so that you could also work on developing procedures or improving or tightening up the process so that it doesn't become an issue anymore. On page ten, or appendix D, the first one that we're going to talk about is the internal control over financial reporting. And basically, and it's not uncommon for smaller cities and villages, because sometimes you don't have enough staff. Sometimes, we don't have a lot of opportunity to segregate duties. You know, if I've got, if I need three people to review and I got two people on staff, that makes it a little difficult sometimes. So you have to kind of sometimes accept the risk or find other ways to minimize the risk as much as possible. But in this case, there was inadequate oversight on the review of journal entries. Sometimes, when the journal entries are prepared at a higher, you know, when you have your levels and the higher ones are preparing them, which is not uncommon, sometimes there's a lack of checking on those journal entries. And the check is really for two reasons, one, we're all human, so we can make mistakes, miscode it to the wrong account, I accidentally put the wrong fund, you know, it's to have a second set of eyes, look at that, to make sure that we're hitting the right accounts and that it makes sense, and then also for verification, to make sure that it is a correct journal entry and to make sure that it's required. Inadequate restrictions over the accounts payable module for accounts payable clerk who may changes to vendor master file, so...
They can hear you, sir.
Am I talking too low? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You just tell me, because I hear myself perfectly. Okay, on the second matter was accounts payable, and just, when you have softwares, one of the things that IT should always just be checking is the allowable ability of certain employees to certain areas. You know, so when we want checks and balances, we want, you know, we have an accounts payable code that has the right to enter the bill or the expenditure. Somebody else should have the right to approve it, and there should be restrictions on the login of that person to make sure that we don't have somebody that could enter the bill, pay the bill, cut the check, write the, you know, so on and so forth. So it comes back to safeguarding assets and segregation of duties, and we might want to get IT... And we might want to get IT involved to just look at the, what every employee has as far as rights within the software and availability and just make sure that they're restricted where they need to be. All the way up to the finance director. So the, sometimes the most knowledgeable person to handle all the accounting is the director, right? But then sometimes we need to also restrict some of those capabilities for safeguarding of assets. So in this example, the financial director, he's got the super user access, which makes the most sense from a common perspective, that he's going to have the most knowledge of how to put everything up and put everything in its place and push down all the work and the requirements. But maybe getting an IT director involved to have that super user right. So it just gives protection also. Like again, sometimes it's hard, it's hard to separate because of limitations of staffing, but sometimes there's opportunity also. So we're just kind of pointing that out to make sure that you have internal controls. A lot of the times the directors welcome it because they don't want the responsibility also, you know. So we just want to maintain documented system of internal controls, including on the IT part of it. Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Before you move on, I also had a question on that. So, because we're not that big, the city is not that big. I mean, you can't compare our staff to the number of El Paso. But do you think that, you know, we're big enough to actually, you know, I don't want to say take full control away from our financial officer and give it to the IT, but do you think that we're sort of big enough to do that or it's just a recommendation?
Right. It is possible, since you have an IT group and they're involved also. It's always looking to see what you have, laying out your organization chart and see what's available. And also making sure that if you can separate and it gives you a better security, then we of course would recommend it. But sometimes, like you said, sometimes you're limited, sometimes you can't because of the number of employees and the setup. And sometimes clients will be, look, this is all we've got and we're just going to accept the risk because we really don't have another option. And some will actually outsource some of the part to a third party. And then some will implement more controls involved. So to answer your question, is it possible? Yes, sir, it is. You could get the IT person involved, but then you also have to make sure that there's controls in place for that as well.
Yeah, because I, you know, and, you know, he's doing a wonderful job. I just don't, I just don't want him to think that, you know, hey, you know, you have all this power and stuff and we're stripping it away. It's nothing like that.
And that's the, an auditor, of course, the auditor's intention is...
We're talking about like a two-step process where, let's just say, they would have an accounting clerk key in the expenditure or whatever, and then Mr. Cassiano would approve, cutting the check. So you're not taking away his power, but it's just a check and balance, making sure that...
Yeah, that's, right. And the super user level is where you're at the IT structure and the setup of the system. So it's actually even pushing it a little bit higher.
So the process is there, it's just the system is not blocked or restricted to that because sometimes one of the individuals is absent, so the other person needs access. But not one person can do the requisition and the other one the PO. It has to be different. But that's why in our budget workshop, we're asking for an internal auditor to add that person for our checks and balances under a different department. So they don't, they don't, Mr. Cassiano would not be their supervisor, it would be myself. That way, there's those checks and balances.
Oh, so we're already taking care of that. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, excuse me, our recommendation is not based on like a major issue or concern, but if there's opportunity and you guys are growing, you know, so you have opportunity to expand, you might be able to separate that cost. And it's usually, it's usually welcome sometimes because if you know I can't do it, then I'm not going to get blamed for it. So, but again, it depends on the structure and the setup. I have some clients that are private and it's hard to separate those duties because the owner wants it that way. But in public, if you have opportunity, we will always recommend it. Okay, on the municipal court allowance for doubtful accounts, in the middle of page ten. This goes back to just saying, you know, we do do an estimation, we do do an allowance on the financial statements. However, it's not an official process and we're just recommending that we should probably put something on paper. This is how it's going to be calculated, this certain amount of times in the year or maybe at the end of each year, based on these thresholds. Normally you look at history to determine your allowance based on what your collectibility rates are. And we're just saying, let's put that on paper, add that to our already existing policies. And we have something else that we don't have to create every year. It's already understood and agreed to.
When you say doubtful accounts, what does that mean?
So for any receivable, what it basically means, Mr. Perez, is money that you don't, you have out there and you're not sure if you're going to get it or not. Okay, so somebody drove by, they're speeding, they pull over, we give them a ticket. They don't show up to court. They're not from here, they're just driving by, they're in California somewhere. They don't show up to court, now there's a warrant out for their arrest. They're never going to come back through here. The chances of us collecting that money is getting slimmer as time goes on. So you put in the allowance to reflect, like if I say I've got four warrants out, three of them are here and one is out of town and I'm not sure if I'm going to get it, I'll put an allowance against that, let's say it's four hundred dollars. I'll put an allowance of a hundred because I'm not sure if I'm going to get it, which really pulls down my receivable to three hundred, which is a more reliable number than the four hundred. Yes, sir. Yeah, well, warrant receivables, yes.
And I just wanted to add, we added the collection agency not too long ago for the warrants, but it was like five million dollars that we had outstanding. So what they're trying is be more realistic in what money we think we're going to bring back. And right now, we haven't really been able to achieve that. So that's our goal for this year is to kind of forecast and draw whatever we feel we're not going to get back.
Correct. Gives you a more realistic picture of what might come into the door.
But that would have to be in place of policy, that would have to go in as policy, against our ordinance.
Correct. Create a policy and then based on numbers, how did we determine what to drop off and say, okay, we're not counting on these funds anymore.
Right. I'll give you an example. Let's say we go back five, six years and historically, we normally have five or ten percent of our receivables written off. We'd never collected. That could be the rule. Okay, well, we're going to say that every year, we're going to put an allowance of five percent of whatever is outstanding. And then we'll true up the numbers every year to reflect that policy.
And I think now we have historical data where we can actually do that.
And that's an accounting, that's a common accounting practice for governmental and all industries. Okay, on page eleven, on capital assets. Capital asset inventory was not performed by the city. And so we have no rate documentation indicating that the final list was approved by management. Okay, and we're on page eleven. Okay, so on the capital assets, what we're saying here is, you know, all the assets, which is all your inventory of assets, we want to track, we want to make sure that there's a process identified and documented of keeping track of those. And I also want to make sure that if we have any disposal of assets, for example, a truck got totaled, that we have processes in place to remove that asset value from the list of assets. And that's what this recommendation is recommending. Look at our policy, there is one. We just want to add some more detail related to the impairment of assets, in other words, the disposal. And then just try to make sure that every year, we're looking at our assets, we're counting them, we're making sure they're all still out there and so on and so forth. When you get, start getting a fleet of trucks and you get a hundred trucks, it's hard to track them all sometimes, you know. So it's just making sure the policies and practices are in place so that we're tracking those more thoroughly. And then there's a lot of things out there that could help you do that. You get more sophisticated with softwares and setups, but it all comes down to budget as well. So, you know, just to make sure we're looking at that.
Would it be recommendable to maybe look at our current accounting system? And to see if we need to upgrade it? I know that we're doing okay, but if we're looking at keeping track of our assets, inventories and then salvaging them and all that to get them off of books?
And that's what we're planning to do with the new position that we're adding. They'll take care of all of that, how to remove, create the policy. I think our Abilla software that we use, we're just not using it to its full potential right now. I think there's a need of training. And with this other person, they can actually, I mean, that's what they're going to focus on is capital assets, inventory.
As, I'm just suggesting, as part of this conversation, maybe we need to look at, looking at a property control technician of some sort that their only duty is to make sure...
Observe.
Their primary duty would be to keep tabs on the inventory. That way, there's that upkeep of the inventory, just a suggestion.
No, I agree.
And what position is that?
The internal auditor?
Okay.
That we requested.
Just, just so...
Thank you, apologies.
No, no worries. And when I'm done, I'll talk to you about my opinion on internal auditors, all day long. Externals love internal auditors. It's all one big family here. So, okay, so that's what we're talking about there on the top of page eleven. On the bottom, special revenue, restricted equity. What this basically relates to, and the softwares, I haven't used the one that you're using. But normally, when you have municipality softwares, you buy pieces, you know. So you could buy the pieces that you need, the payroll, the financial, the general ledger, so on. And then as you grow, you could add more pieces, but of course it comes with more costs, you know. So you're always looking at cost benefit analysis. So I'm pretty sure whatever you're using now has the modules that you'll need. Or like Adriana said, maybe we just need to add another process in there. So rather than change, which is a whole other ball of wax, it's first to look to see what we have and see if we can expand from it. But on the special revenue, on that fund in itself, there's multiple grants and...
So are we talking about encumbrances, of tracking the encumbrances for future purchases and things of that nature?
On this part, yes, sir, yeah. So what I'm talking about here is normally when you get a grant, sometimes the grants will have requirements and restrictions. And that's good and dandy and sometimes when you have five or six or seven or ten or eleven grants. If you have them all in one area, sometimes they might get mixed together or mixed up. So it's just proper, it's just better, looking to see if we could better classify and code the revenue expenditures by grant within the special revenue fund so that we can make sure we're in compliance. I think now, the process has been put in place and everything is in process. It's looking at the history before we made the changes.
Correct. And remember like the TRZ funds, that we weren't allocating those funds into a specific account? That's part of your special revenue, that no one really created that account.
So then under that umbrella, I guess we would need cost center codes for each of those grants, is that?
You need, what I'm...
Like a cost center code for each of those grants, you would have Grant A or B.
Right, exactly, exactly. So maybe some, you know, your GL codes, I'm sure you have enough numbers in there.
Included in that thing is a whole grant programs code that we have for each grant.
Yeah, sub-accounts if you can.
So we've covered that too.
Right. So I know there's been changes already in place and it's working better, a whole lot better now. It's just going back to what's been in the past, which is going to be fun, you know, to go back and try to pull all that out. So, but that's what we're saying here. But I know management is already working on the process and has already made the changes. We're just still required to present it as part of our audit. Okay, on page twelve, we have here... Okay, on the municipal courts and warrants receivable. I've already kind of talked about it a little bit, but just making sure that the coding is correct. Making sure that we're recognizing, when we do have a warrant receivable outstanding, that we're recognizing the portion that's going to go to the city, portion that's going to go to the state. And just make sure that's documented appropriately on the financials. I've already talked to you guys about that. I don't think there's any questions. On the bottom of page twelve, the improper controls over payroll liabilities. Oh, this is just another checks and balances, you know, because some of the journal entries are done at the higher level of the team. There was just a, you know, just, it's one of those days, you know, you put the wrong number. When we looked at it, we were able to reverse it out and put the right one. But if we had a checks and balance on the journal entry process, that might have helped catch this incorrect entry. But again, the good thing about accounting is most of the time you could always fix it. Just reverse out that entry, put in a new one, but we want to put in controls to avoid those in the future, so. But again, it comes down to staffing and availability and so forth. On page thirteen. Okay, this is just another coding. When we get insurance proceeds, it's revenue to the city. And it was just accidentally coded to liabilities and it was just a reclassification. But we have to, because of the amount, you know, we have to put it in our findings of just, you know, watching out for that and making sure that we're putting revenues in the right place and liabilities in the right place. So this was in the favor of the city, so it's just watching the coding. Again, with the journal entry check, that'll help clear that up. And then other matters that we just want to bring, and it's just, this is the low hanging fruit for the auditors, you know. The state of Texas, it's impeachment. You guys know when I say it's cheat? It's a weird word, but it's basically whenever the city has outstanding checks, let's say payroll checks or vendor checks that are never claimed or never cashed, after a certain period of time, depending on the type of check, you're required to send it to the state. And everybody in business is required to do it and almost everybody in business does not do it. But it's a requirement that the state has, the state of Texas. So when you have payroll checks that are outstanding more than a year, you're then required, if it's never claimed, to send that money to the state. And then if the employee ever came back and said, hey, you owe me a check, I never cashed my last one, then you send it to the state and they collect it from over there. And the same with vendors. After three years, I believe, then the vendor, if you have a check that's been outstanding for three years, then you're supposed to do the same thing. Now, before all that, the management is supposed to make attempts to try to find the person. But by example of somebody leaving town, military is usually an issue. Sometimes you're sent overseas and you never hear from the person again. Those are examples of some of those. So the amounts are very small, but it's just something that you're required to do. And we're just noting it that, you know, just to look into that. After you're done reconciling all the history of municipality, of the, all the special revenue, then you can look into achievements, you know, and all that extra time. Okay, and then on the last page, on page fourteen. We're always looking to improve and we always want to be working with management as much as possible. So any opportunities for improvement, we always want to list them. And then if there's anything that we could add as a value on as your auditors, you know, internal controls, training, documentation, policy review, we're happy to look at those. We do that for a lot of clients, just to make sure there's nothing missing in your policies and procedures. Making sure they're in compliance with current rules and regulations. Right now, there's a lot of tax changes that occur that could affect you. There's a lot of Department of Labor changes that are coming up that could affect you. So sometimes we have clients just hand us their information to look at it to make sure you're the most up to date. IT control, all day long. I mean, cybersecurity is just the hottest thing right now. And you could see all the way to the federal government, there's issues, you know. So we have a team dedicated to only doing IT audits. So if you ever have any questions related to that, we're happy to lend a hand. And then changes in accounting rules and auditing rules coming up. Leases used to be expensed, well, they're still expensed, but in a couple of years, the requirement to now capitalize leases are going to be, it's going to be a change. We have some clients that are already implementing the change before the requirement, which is a nineteen. So if you guys are bored after everything else and you want to start implementing that, we'd be happy to help with that. Overall, it went well. Again, field work was awesome. I mean, I was supposed to get out here during field work and my team came in and out so quickly, I didn't get a chance to come out here. So we really appreciate management's support and help. And over the years, it's been a growing relationship, learning how we are getting things and so on and so forth. So we really appreciate Adriana and Charlie and everyone on the team for all the support and cooperation. And I'm here to answer any other questions that you have.
Mr. Perez?
I'd just like to see in terms of a turnaround because I know that there's one issue that has been recurring and that's the inventory issue. I'd like to get from staff a report when things have been addressed. That, for example, as he was talking, you said, okay, well, we're doing this, we're doing that. But the one recurring issue is that inventory and we've been dealing with that for like a long time. And so I think that I would like to see when that gets resolved because... And so I think that, I would like to see when that gets resolved, because that's something that, I mean, it's not that we're doing illegal or anything like that, but just for the sake of keeping that.
Correct. And that's what we're trying to kinda add more eyes and hands to the pot, so we can get our hands around that, yeah.
And more money to the budget too?
No, but I agree.
Any other questions for me?
Nope.
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, and so the internal auditor, very, if, if you guys can get that in the budget and do it, that's the person that'll help with all this.
Oh, yeah.
To, to go from scratch on the capital assets is a big job, and, uh, the internal auditor works well with the external, because sometimes they're able to do some work for us also. So we know that they're in there, sometimes we can push some of the work, 'cause they know how we think, and give us the information that we need. So it's a win-win for everybody. Of course, it's another cost, but it gives you more assurance that you're checking your balances and making sure your assets are safeguarded.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Ira number fifteen, discussion of action and reading of the findings of an internal investigation of the Socorro Police Department.
Good evening, mayor and council, can you hear me okay?
A little bit.
On March fifteenth, you instructed the, or you directed the HR office to oversee an investigation into a January twentieth, twenty eighteen traffic stop. Numerous employees, uh, Socorro PD employees were interviewed, um, policies, procedures, laws were reviewed, phone records were reviewed, um, video, the video dash cam itself was reviewed, um, security camera video footage was reviewed, as well as phone conversations, or recorded phone conversations. Um, the original report is thirty-three pages, I'm going to read you a seven-page summary of that, so please bear with me. This, this summary is broken up into three parts, it's the traffic stop and its conclusion, Adriana Rodarte's part and its conclusion, and the production and release of the dash cam video and investigative report. So I'm going to begin. This is the traffic stop portion. On January twentieth, twenty eighteen, Socorro Police Officer Rene Marine performed a traffic stop on Diego Salais, who is the son of City of Socorro City Manager Adriana Rodarte. Mr. Salais was pulled over for driving over the speed limit on a City of Socorro road. When the officer made contact, Mr. Salais identified himself with a Texas identification card. The officer asked if he still lived at the address listed on the identification. Mr. Salais answered that he lived elsewhere and that his mother was the city manager. Officer Marine asserted that he did not hear Mr. Salais' response and asked, excuse me? Mr. Salais repeated, my mom's the city manager here in Socorro. Officer Marine stated that he was not phased, he ignored the comment and continued with the traffic stop. He smelled alcohol emitting from the cab of the vehicle. Officer Marine asked Mr. Salais if he had consumed alcohol, and Mr. Salais responded that he had had two beers. Mr. Salais stated that he was coming from near Del Valle High School. Officer Marine asked him to step out of the vehicle and they both walked to the back of Mr. Salais' vehicle. Officer Marine conducted a horizontal gaseous nystagmus HGN test on Mr. Salais and determined that he was not intoxicated enough to proceed with a field sobriety test. Officer Marine stated that he had been on patrol for about three years and three months and conducted over one hundred DWI arrests. Officer Marine is confident that he has become proficient in conducting HGN tests to determine whether a field sobriety test is necessary. He stated that HGN tests normally require four clues out of six to, to proceed with a field sobriety test. In this case, Officer Marine observed distinct nystagmus at maximum deviation, two clues out of six. During the test, Officer Marine noticed a white substance under Mr. Salais' nose. Officer Marine had him lift his head up and Mr. Salais stated, I've been sick, sir. Officer Marine escorted Mr. Salais to the patrol unit to conduct a field test for narcotics. Officer Marine swabbed Mr. Salais' nose with a narcotic swipe, which turned blue, indicating the presence of a controlled substance. Mr. Salais denied consuming a controlled substance. Officer Marine searched Mr. Salais and his vehicle due to the presence of a controlled substance. Officer Marine did not discover any narcotics. At that point, Officer Marine decided to release Mr. Salais to a responsible party for safety reasons, because Mr. Salais emitted a strong odor of alcohol. Officer Marine indicated that the driver was being belligerent. Officer Marine tried to convince Mr. Salais to have his mother pick him up. Mr. Salais refused to provide her phone number and told Officer Marine to arrest him. Officer Marine told Mr. Salais that there was not enough evidence to arrest him. Eventually, Mr. Salais gave Officer Marine his mother, Adriana Rodarte's phone number. Officer Marine called her, explained the situation, and asked her to pick up Mr. Salais. Mr. Rodarte arrived at the traffic stop and told Officer Marine that he didn't have to do this, apparently meaning that Officer Marine did not have to call her. Officer Marine stated he understood, but that he was releasing Mr. Salais to a responsible party, because there was not enough evidence to proceed with a DWI arrest. Mr. Rodarte asked Officer Marine how he knew that Mr. Salais was her son. Officer Marine responded that Mr. Salais immediately blurted the same upon being approached, excuse me. Officer Marine indicated that no one influenced his decision at the traffic stop. Officer Marine asserted that from the beginning of the traffic stop until he called Mr. Rodarte to pick up her son, neither Officer Marine nor Mr. Salais made any phone calls. Officer Marine said his job was not threatened during or after the incident. Officer Marine denied knowing Adriana Rodarte or Mr. Salais in a personal capacity. Officer Marine knew Ms. Rodarte professionally because she is the city manager and was the human resource, excuse me, resources director when he was first hired. Officer Marine denied meeting Mr. Salais prior to the traffic stop. Officer Marine believes that Ms. Rodarte meant, when she told him he didn't have to do this, that he did not have to call her to pick up Mr. Salais. Officer Marine indicated that there was a possibility that Ms. Rodarte perceived incorrectly that he released Mr. Salais as a favor. Officer Marine asserted that his decisions were not influenced by the fact that Mr. Salais was Ms. Rodarte's son. Officer Marine recalled that Ms. Rodarte sent Mr. Salais to her vehicle to sit with her mother. Ms. Rodarte drove Mr. Salais' vehicle from the scene. Officer Marine ended his shift at five AM, January twentieth, twenty eighteen. Officer Marine did not write an incident report on January twentieth, twenty eighteen, as it is not normal practice to write an incident report for traffic stops that do not result in an arrest. Per normal practice, Officer Marine logged the events in his daily log. Traffic stop conclusion. Officer Marine made the discretionary decision to release Mr. Salais before calling Ms. Rodarte to ask her to pick up her son. There is no evidence or indication that Ms. Rodarte used her position to influence Officer Marine's decision. Phone records show a single one-minute call having been made to Ms. Rodarte's personal phone from Officer Marine's personal phone at three twenty-four AM, January twentieth, twenty eighteen. Officer Marine and Mrs. Rodarte's account of the January twentieth, twenty eighteen traffic stop are consistent. And now this is Adriana Rodarte's part. On January twentieth, twenty eighteen, Adriana Rodarte received a call to her personal cellphone from Officer Marine requesting that she pick up her son. Officer Marine provided the location and Ms. Rodarte told him she was on her way. Ms. Rodarte denied asking why she needed to pick up her son or for any other details. Ms. Rodarte does not remember if Officer Marine provided her with additional details. Ms. Rodarte denied receiving any other phone calls prior to the incident before Officer Marine called her. Once on the scene, Ms. Rodarte asked what had happened. Officer Marine explained the incident to her. Officer Marine told Ms. Rodarte that her son had been evaluated for possible intoxication, and there were not enough clues to indicate that he was over the legal alcohol limit. Officer Marine told Ms. Rodarte that he had swiped Mr. Salais' nose and tested, and he tested positive for controlled substance. Officer Marine informed Ms. Rodarte that a search of Mr. Salais' vehicle and person yielded no narcotics. Ms. Rodarte recalled saying, you do what you have to do, officer. Ms. Rodarte stated that Officer Marine released Mr. Salais to her. Ms. Rodarte drove Mr. Salais' car, Ms. Rodarte stated that when she entered the vehicle, she asked Officer Marine how he knew Mr. Salais was her son. Officer Marine responded that Mr. Salais told him, told him. Ms. Rodarte stated, oh my God. Ms. Rodarte denied instructing Officer Marines, Marine to release Mr. Salais or what decision to make at the traffic stop. Ms. Rodarte denied that Officer Marine told her or communicated that he was letting Mr. Salais go, because he was the son of the city manager. Ms. Rodarte stated that to her understanding, Officer Marine decided not to arrest Mr. Salais and just wanted Ms. Rodarte to pick him up. Ms. Rodarte denied asking any questions. Ms. Rodarte denied that she told Mr., she, that she was told that Mr. Salais is released was a favor. Ms. Rodarte indicated that she has always been professional with all officers. Adriana Rodarte conclusion. There is no evidence or indication that Ms. Rodarte used her position to influence Officer Marine's actions during the January twentieth, twenty eighteen traffic stop. Officer Marine made the discretionary decision to release Mr. Salais before calling Ms. Rodarte to ask her to pick up her son. Phone records show a single one-minute call having been made to Ms. Rodarte's personal phone from Officer Marine's personal phone at three twenty-four AM, January twentieth, twenty eighteen. Per phone records, there are no calls from Mr. Salais' phone to Ms. Rodarte's personal or city cell during the time in question. Per phone records, there are no outgoing calls from Ms. Rodarte's personal or city cellphone during the time in question. Furthermore, there is no evidence of communication between Ms. Rodarte and Officer Marine or any other SPD officer, Socorro PD officer, or employee regarding the incident since January twentieth, twenty eighteen. Officer Marine and Ms. Rodarte's account of the January twentieth, twenty eighteen traffic stop are consistent. This is the final part. This is the, uh, production and release of the dash cam video and, uh, incident investigation report. The first known copy of the January twentieth, twenty eighteenth traffic stop dash cam video was made on February twenty-first, twenty eighteen. Approximately one week prior to February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, Lieutenant Eddie Smith instructed Sergeant Rosario to request one copy of the video from property and evidence custodian Molly Viscaino Cardosa. Ms. Viscaino Cardosa produced one copy of the video and advised Sergeant Rosario to pick it up. Ms. Viscaino Cardosa did not initiate a chain of evidence, because it was not normal practice to do so in the absence of a report or a case number. Ms. Viscaino Cardosa remembered Sergeant Rosario's request for the video, but does not remember whether she gave her one or two copies. She remembers Mrs. Viscaino Cardosa wanting to know what was happening. Acting Sergeant Rosario explained that it involved the city manager and that Lieutenant Smith wanted the video. On February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, Carlos Maldonado asked Officer Marine to write an interdepartmental corresponding, correspondence detailing the traffic stop. That same day, Officer Marine emailed Mr. Maldonado asking whether he wanted an IDC or an information report. Mr. Maldonado responded that the information report would be sufficient. Officer Marine obtained a copy of the dash cam video from Sergeant Rosario, so that he could use it to write his report, given that approximately five weeks had passed since the incident. On February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, the next day, and thirty-eight days after the traffic stop, Officer Marine completed the requested report. The investigation report was started at eight thirty-three AM on February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, and completed later that same day at two twenty-one PM. Mr. Maldonado was informed of the report's completion af, shortly after, at two thirty-eight PM by Acting Sergeant Lee Rosario. It must, it must be noted that it is not normal practice to create a report so many days after an incident. Officer Marine recalls first discussing the traffic stop with Mr. Maldonado and Ms. Rosa Hernandez in Rosa Hernandez's office, but did not remember exactly when. Rosa Hernandez recalled the same conversation and stated that it took place on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. During that conversation, Mr. Maldonado asked the officer for dates and times in order to obtain the dash cam video, because he said it might be needed to cover the department and the city if the incident ever came up. On February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, at approximately, and this is the same day, at approximately five fifty-eight PM, approximately three hours after the report's completion, Daniel Hernandez, planning and zoning and building and standards commissioner appointed by District Four Representative Ivan Colombia Lobos, called Carlos Maldonado to inquire about the January twentieth, twenty eighteen traffic stop of Diego Salais. Mr. Hernandez claimed that an anonymous caller had just then informed him about the incident. He told Mr. Maldonado that if he could confirm that it had happened, he wanted to have the dash cam video of the stop. Mr. Maldonado confirmed the traffic stop and the existence of the video. Mr. Maldonado, I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez requested help from Mr. Maldonado to obtain the video quickly, because he believed that if he proceeded with the open records request process, it would take too long. Mr. Maldonado explained that Mr. Hernandez would have to submit an open records request. He provided Mr. Hernandez the name of the officer who made the stop as well as his badge number. At that time, Mr. Maldonado also informed Mr. Hernandez that in addition to the dash cam video, the officer had, as a matter of fact, submitted an information report on the traffic stop. Mr. Hernandez insisted that he wanted the video as soon as possible, because the city manager's contract was on that week's agenda, and his purpose was to get to her. Mr. Hernandez then asked if he could at least see the video. He said that he did not intend to retaliate against the officer. Mr. Maldonado repeatedly told Mr. Hernandez that he understood his intentions, but that he could not circumvent the system by letting him see the video. Mr. Hernandez insisted, and Mr. Maldonado said he would think about it. He then invited Mr. Hernandez to visit him at Socorro Police Headquarters the next morning, February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at ten AM, to discuss the matter further. The parties agreed to meet the next morning and said goodbye. On February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, two additional copies of the video were created. On that day, Ms. Viscaino Cardo, Cardosa asked Acting Sergeant Rosario to deliver the two copies to Lieutenant Smith. Acting Ros, Acting Sergeant Rosario delivered the disc to Lieutenant Smith, who thanked her and said he would give them to Chief Maldonado. On or around February twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, Officer Marine visited Lieutenant Smith's office and observed Smith reviewing the incident report of the traffic stop on his computer. Lieutenant Smith informed Officer Marine that there were already three open records requests for the video. Officer Marine asked who requested the incident video. Per Officer Marine, Lieutenant Smith responded that the individuals were possibly Lorenzo Freire, Daniel Hernandez, and an unknown third person. Security camera was obtained for, from Socorro Police, Socorro Police Department Headquarters for the morning of February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. This is the day of, of the meeting. At nine thirty-four AM, Mr. Hernandez arrived at Socorro Police Department Headquarters with empty hands except for his cellphone. Shortly after, Mr. Maldonado received him, and shortly after that, they entered his office. At nine thirty-nine AM, Anna Robles is seen, is seen walking towards the printer, retrieving four freshly printed papers, counting all four sheets, and taking them into Mr. Maldonado, into Mr. Maldonado's office. She walks back out of Mr. Maldonado's office and towards her own, empty-handed. At that same time, Lieutenant Smith joined the two men in Mr. Maldonado's office. Shortly after, Mr. Maldonado and Lieutenant Smith exit Mr. Maldonado's office, leaving Hernandez alone for approximately six minutes in Mr. Maldonado's office. They re-enter Mr. Maldonado's office, and after approximately three minutes, they all step out of the office, with Mr. Hernandez being the last to exit. Mr. Hernandez walked directly in front of Lieutenant Smith, holding two or more sheets of paper in his hand, in his left hand. Lieutenant Smith did not appear to acknowledge Mr. Hernandez as he crossed the lobby towards the exit and left the building. The next day, on March first, twenty eighteen, Daniel Hernandez addressed City of Socorro City Council during the public comment portion of the regular city council, council meeting. Mr. Hernandez claimed that just then, on his way to the meeting, news reporters presented him with information regarding recent events going on in the City of Socorro. Later in the same meeting, Mr. Hernandez spoke regarding the city manager's contract, asking city council to consider the information that the news reporters are showing before deciding on the city manager's contract. Constituent Sergio Jaime and Lorenzo Freire also spoke of information that had been provided to them regarding Adriana Rodarte and her son. Ms. Lorenzo Freire held up a still shot of part of the dash cam video, as well as the incident investigation report, which she read details from during her time at this podium. At that same meeting on March first, twenty eighteen, Adriana Rodarte also spoke to city council regarding the traffic stop. Ms. Rodarte stated that no open records. Mr. Rodarte stated that no open records request was submitted for the records in question. Mr. Rodarte stated that she did not ask anyone to do her a favor and that a phone call was placed to her at the officer's discretion. On or around March 5th, 2018, Mr. Rodarte requested the complete investigation report that had been provided to the news reporter from Univision and received it. The timestamp on the report was 2:28, 2018, 9:39 a.m., the exact time and date that Anna Robles is seen retrieving the four sheets of paper from the printer and providing them to Carlos Maldonado on the February 28th, 2018 SPD headquarters video. On March 26th, 2018, then Acting Lieutenant Ray located a folder on top of Lieutenant Smith's desk that contained three copies of the dash cam video and two copies of the investigative report. Lieutenant Smith could not explain why there were additional copies of the dash cam video on his desk and denied ever making copies. Lieutenant Smith also stated that he did not remember requesting copies of the dash cam video from the evidence clerk, nor having them delivered by a sergeant directly to him. This is the conclusion of the production and release of the dash cam video and report. No open records requests for the dash cam video or the incident report were submitted prior to the release to the public on or around March 1st, 2018. On February 28th, 2018, Lieutenant Smith falsely stated to Officer Marine that there were already three open records requests for the dash cam video. On March 2nd, 2018, Daniel Hernandez submitted an official open records request for the dash cam video and incident report of the January 20th, 2018 traffic stop. Based on witness statements, Lieutenant Smith requested one copy of the dash cam video on February 21st, 2018 and two copies of the video on February 28th, 2018. Lieutenant Smith believed that it was Mr. Maldonado who asked Sergeant Rosario to retrieve a copy of the dash cam video on February 21st, 2018. Lieutenant Smith's claim is contradictory to witness statements. Based on witness statements, both Lieutenant Smith and Carlos Maldonado gave instructions to Officer Marine to make a written record of the January 20th, 2018 traffic stop at different times between February 22nd, 2018 and February 26th, 2018. Based on witness statements, reports are not completed and case numbers are not typically assigned for traffic stops. Carlos Maldonado and Lieutenant Smith both understood that Daniel Hernandez intended to acquire the dash cam video and any other information related to the traffic stop to harm Mr. Rodarte's position as city manager. Carlos Maldonado assisted Daniel Hernandez in releasing protected information related to the traffic stop in order to intentionally harm Mr. Rodarte. He did so in the presence of Lieutenant Smith. Lieutenant Smith falsely stated that he did not stay for the entire meeting between Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Maldonado on February 20th, 28th, 2018 because he could not take any more of Mr. Hernandez's conspiracy theories. Video footage from SPD headquarters shows that Lieutenant Smith was present the entire time. Daniel Hernandez denied being given the report on February 28th, 2018, claiming that they just discussed it in Carlos Maldonado's office. Once he was made aware of the video showing him leaving SPD headquarters with papers in hand, he asserted that he was given one single sheet of paper from Carlos Maldonado. The video contradicts Mr. Hernandez's statement as it shows him leaving with two or more papers in hand. Per Executive Assistant Rosa Hernandez, Records Clerk Anna Robles saw him leaving with documents in hand and expressed fear that he had left with a report because she understood the rules regarding open records requests. Lieutenant Smith was present for the entire meeting between Carlos Maldonado and Daniel Hernandez. Lieutenant Smith never reported the collusion between Mr. Maldonado and Mr. Hernandez to the city manager or Human Resources. Daniel Hernandez's account of how he obtained the video and report is inconsistent and untruthful. He intentionally misled city council during the March 1st, 2018 city council meeting by telling them during open comment that he learned about the traffic stop from the news reporters on his way to the meeting. He later told Lieutenant Ray that when he arrived home after his meeting with Mr. Maldonado on February 28th, 2018, the dash cam video and report were on his doorstep, and that he gave the video to the news outlets. He also lied to Lieutenant Ray on April 3rd, 2018 by telling them that he was given only one sheet of paper when evidence shows him leaving SPD headquarters with two or more sheets of paper on February 28th, 2018. Carlos Maldonado and Lieutenant Smith participated in the creation of records in question and were aware of their unlawful release to the public. Furthermore, the incident investigative report given to Mr. Hernandez by Carlos Maldonado in the presence of Lieutenant Smith had no redactions and included Adriana Rodarte's address, date of birth, and similar information about a member of her family. Per the Texas Public Information Act, an employee's personal information is confidential and protected under the common law privacy doctrine. To summarize the conclusion of the findings of the investigation into the January 20th, 2018 traffic stop and the subsequent release of information regarding the same, Officer Marine made the discretionary decision to release Diego Salais to a responsible party prior to asking Adriana Rodarte to pick up her son. Adriana Rodarte did not use her position as city manager to influence Officer Marine's decision on January 20th, 2018 or any time thereafter. Carlos Maldonado used his position to release confidential information unlawfully with the intent to harm a city of Socorro employee. That is the end. Any questions?
Thank you.
And just one - one thing, if I can add something. All this happened, it's been investigated, there might be people who wonder why. I do have a timeline that'll explain. It'll put the intent into context. You'll put everything into context and you will understand the intent. And I have those timelines here now if you'd like to see them.
Sure.
Item number 16, discussion number 15, discussion and action and reading of the - I'm sorry. Item number 16, discussion and action on Civil Service Commission recommendation to hire -
We didn't - it's just - yeah, we have a motion. You know, I would like to make a motion to release the videos, the audios, and the full report with redactions of personnel so that the public can really see what really went on because once you look at the timeline, you can see that there was a lot of - a lot of, you know, call it like it is, black stabbing, you know. I mean, it's one of those things that, you know, we will not tolerate this in the city of Socorro. We're better than this. I think that as the years progress in the city, you know, we've changed the way Socorro used to do business, you know. We need to show our constituents that we're not going to tolerate this. We're not going to tolerate this, you know. We get - we get good employees that leave the city because of stuff like this. You know, I think that, you know, when you're out to get somebody just because you don't like them or you're being threatened by your job, you know, it's something that -
Mr. - nobody was threatened, nobody's -
Well, not threatened, but you know, it's - you feel that, you know, talk about harassment nowadays, you know, it's like, you know, what can you say or what can you do? So, there's retaliation. I believe that we should let out all the information, redact personal information, and then out the videos and audio as well. And that would be my motion.
Well, I'll make a - I'll second that motion, but I guess my thing is that it's very - it's very depressing or very - just - this is our hard knock because we have individuals that we think that should act professionally and didn't. We have individuals who misrepresent themselves by saying, "Well, I'm representing all this group of people," and really it's not. And that, to me, is very demoralizing because here we are, we have a great police force. They're trying the best they can with what they have. We have a city manager that is trying to do the best that she can and is - and we're all trying to move forward, but yet at the same time, we get individuals that are here saying half-truths and sometimes we cannot - we cannot call them out on it because that's not the proper protocol. Yet they have the liberty to be able to say all these things that they - they say that they're doing it in the best interest of the city. My only point here is that if they were truly, truly in - so preoccupied with the city and the health and welfare of the city, then if they had that dilemma with Mr. Rodarte, why didn't they articulate that problem in January, February times? Why wait until the very night that we were going to approve or that we ended up approving her contract? Obviously, there was a very specific intent to discredit her - discredit her as a professional, to discredit her in her professional life, a personal life as a mother, and I think that that is some - that's a - to me, that's a very serious line that they crossed. And I would invite the community that if you see these individuals, especially Mr. Hernandez, to call him out on it because he has sworn also, as a commissioner, to uphold the laws of the state and of the city. And one of that - one of those laws that we have in the city are the open records requests, which he did not follow as a commissioner.
And he clearly understood, and they both understood.
So, I - to me, that also calls to - calls to question their integrity and their credibility and their professionalism. And I think that as a city, we need to make sure, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, to publicize all of what has been recovered in terms of the report, redacting that information that we cannot present to the public because of personal confidentiality, whatever the case may be, but have that available for the public to see that because it's very easy to chastise and once you go - once you bring someone down professionally and personally, it's hard to recover. And Mr. Rodarte, to her credit, has done a very good job at surpassing this issue. But the thing is that we're talking about somebody's livelihood, we're talking about somebody's family, and it's very - and where are those three individuals now, especially Mr. Hernandez? Where are they now to hold them accountable for what they said and what they did? They're not. So, I think that I have a - I would make a very resounding second to publishing this report.
Could I?
That is so right on point, you know. You know, Sergio Jaime, Mr. Hernandez, Lorenzo Freire always come to this podium and knocks our city manager, our HR department, our police department, us as council. We're sick and tired of it. I mean, people don't tend to forget - they forget that she was here as a city manager and that only lasted one year. I wonder why. So, one of the things is that the community needs to stop, and I will say this in Spanish too. Paren de escuchar chismes de Lorenzo Freire, Hernandez, y Sergio Jaime. You know, because it's something that, you know, it's - they lie all the time. Our members of council, don't call on them. I do. Anybody that comes and lies here, I call them a liar. I'm not supposed to do it, but I will because I am not going to stay here and get ridiculed or none of my peers. We're doing the best we can for the city, you know, and this is a black - another black eye for the city. When are we going to move forward and let the people who are working to move this city forward just because you don't like them?
I wanted to say something, if I could, from an HR perspective. This type of situation is demoralizing to the employees and as an HR director, I'm very concerned. It concerned me when it happened. To me, it was not only an employee - an issue with the employees, it was a public safety issue as well. You've got an entire department that is made to look very badly to the public because people are on TV saying that this is happening, "There goes Socorro again," doing things. To me, I'm looking at the employees and I'm looking at - I'm looking at a safety issue with them. They're having to deal with the public that doesn't like them and only because people decided to make something up. So, I just - I want you all to think about who you allow to come up here and say these things, and as an HR director, I'm very concerned about our employees being made to look bad. No.
Mayor, just to - the action is to release all documents, not just the one we did last week, but the one - all 32 some pages, redact whatever we need to redact, videos, audio, every documentation that we have, we're going to get it to the public.
Yeah, we may have to go through it. It might not be available tomorrow, but we might go through it to make sure that everything legally permissible can be released, but once we do that, yes.
Adriana Rodarte?
Hi.
Please, René Valdez?
Yes.
Raul Tora?
Yes.
Vicente Perez?
Hi.
Ivan Colombia Lalo?
Yes.
Item number 16, discussion and action on Civil Service Commission recommendation to hire chief of police.
How come we didn't get a backup for this? Jim, we're doing this in open, right?
You can - you can, and you can also, if you choose, you can - we're not required to, you can do it in executive session.
Now, what do - I mean, do it here.
Good evening, mayor and council. The binders in front of you consist of the chief of police candidate's final review information, which includes a table of content, a brochure, candidate's tabs with basic information, cover letter and resumes, questionnaires, and application. On the left-hand side, you will have a copy of the interview questions ranking form and a handout interview questions, do's and don'ts, that were provided to the civil service commissioners. On the right-hand pocket, you will find a letter to mayor and council with a recommendation of our next chief of police. The interviews were conducted June 25th, and the panel consisted of the City of Socorro Civil Service Commission members, chairperson Alex Miranda, commission members Luis Chávez, Jorge Estrada, Ruben García, José Landeros, and Jesse Montelongo. A total of four candidates were eligible to participate in the interview. The following are the ranking numbers. Candidate one scored 494 points. Candidate two scored 476 points. Candidate three scored 458. Candidate four scored 431 points. There was also a public forum on June 26th. We did receive multiple positive comments on candidate number one and a negative email on candidate number two. There was also a public - I'm sorry - Civil Service Commission recommends Tammy Burr for the chief of police position. Ms. Burr is an outstanding candidate who has had both the skills and experience to fulfill the requirements to the position entails of the city police department. City manager Adriana Rodarte and human resources director Jose Marine are in agreement with the recommendation and recommend approval. I do know that Mayor and Renee Rodriguez attended the public forum and we do have it on our website in case you want to see the candidates. There's a specific questions that, that they said, finish the phrase, "A true leader", and all of them answer. And, and kind of gives you a little bit more about these candidates if you wish to view that.
Mr. Hernandez?
Are we going to have a presentation?
Mr. Perez?
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and accept the recommendation from the Civil Service Commission and staff on extending an offer to Ms. Burr for the Chief of Police of the City of Socorro and for her to be the lone candidate for this position.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Jim, I have a question. Since we did this in, in, in open forum, people could come and, and look at, you know, the candidates and stuff. You know, I, I, would it be, would it be too much to ask? I'm not saying anytime soon, I'm just saying that next time we do this, we should, you know, the qualificat- because a lot of people called me when they knew that it was an open forum. They were asking what qualifications each individual had, they couldn't make it. But I mean, if, if, it, would we be crossing, you know, just to say, hey, you know, their qualifications, they come from X amount of experience and so forth? Or, or that's just too personal? No, 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 I know, but for like on our-
In the backup, there was a summary sheet of their qualifications and credentials in the backup of the-
The meeting.
Packet. Correct. The binders that you have in front of you, we will need that back because that has information, social security numbers, information that is not put into the public.
They've covered the summary qualification.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess they didn't know, and that's what I was asking is that-
And that is the reason why we conducted a public forum, to allow the community to come and meet and greet these candidates and provide us their feedback regarding their candidates. I mean, you all received an email regarding candidate number two.
Okay, no, I just wanted to know because, I mean, I just wanted to say it out there because people didn't, weren't able to attend, they were asking me. I didn't see my email for that whole remainder of the week because I'm going through some personal issues with my mom. And, and that's what I was asking is that-
And we do have a video on our website.
Okay.
Front page.
That's, that's great.
Of all the, the public forum, which is an hour and fifty-four minutes.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Yes.
So it would be the lone candidate?
Yes.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
And just, just, I really wanted to attend, but Puerto Peñasco could not wait, so. But I did watch, I know, I watched the video, so thank you for putting it up. Thank you, yes.
The motion? No, the motion?
Yes. Item number seventeen, discussion and action and approval of Resolution five forty-seven, authorizing the City of Socorro to submit a multi-jurisdiction grant application with El Paso County to the Texas Division of Emergency Management under disaster declaration for Texas Hurricane Harvey, DR forty-three thirty-two Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for improvements along the Sparks Arroyo, watershed in the amount of four billion five hundred forty-three million two hundred and twenty with fifty cents. The City of Socorro will be the lead applicant and the city's match contribution is seven hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and five with thirteen cents.
Motion for approval, Resolution five forty-seven?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdez, interim grants coordinator. So what you have before you is a resolution to authorize the city to submit an application to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. On August twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, the President of the United States issued a major disaster declaration for Hurricane Harvey. This established the availability of funds through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The priority for these funds is for the counties affected by Hurricane Harvey. However, it is estimated that about twenty-five million dollars is available for the rest of the state. So we have an opportunity to competitively apply for those funds. The total amount is four million five hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars with fifty cents. Approximately one point five million dollars would go to mitigation projects in El Paso County. The rest, the three million dollars, would go for mitigation projects in Socorro. And the twenty-five percent match is seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred and five dollars with thirteen cents. For your backup, you can see minutes from the El Paso County Commissioners Court approving the submission of a joint notice of intent between El Paso County and the City of Socorro. I mean, yes. You also have a location map that you can see where El Paso County would carry out their ponding structure and where we, where we would apply that funding in Socorro. You can also see the joint notice of intent that we submitted. And you can see the letter which the Texas Division of Emergency Management sent to the City of Socorro approving our project as eligible and allowing us to submit the full application. You can also see a proposed budget with a breakdown of each of the activities that we will carry out for this grant. And lastly, you can see some pages from the Sparks Arroyo Drainage Study that was completed by Danenbaum. We used this report in order to draft our portion of the project and our mitigation activities, so we followed that. Any questions? This is a large match amount. But we would be, our mitigation activities would include one ponding structure on Onion Field, a culvert on Thunder Road, and some channel improvements from Thunder, Thunder Road up to Reed Road. Okay? The El Paso County mitigation project would include acquisition of land and engineering of a ponding structure on the corner of Sparks and Notre Dame Lane. And so with those two ponding structures, we would also do the engineering to assess if that would, that system would be able to carry the one-hundred-year floodplain volume.
Miss Galos?
Just for those that can answer this question, I know we're talking about budget and, and, you know, right now we're falling short and et cetera, et cetera. Where would these funds be coming from?
And that's actually a question that we're going to ask council because we just had a budget workshop. And it would probably come from your special, I'm sorry, your reserves? Or if not, COs? That you would have to apply for though.
And can I, second part to that question? How soon do we have to come up with this money?
We have to commit in order to submit the application. It's an estimated timeline right now because Hurricane Harvey funds are still ongoing. They're moving the deadline back and forth, so within the next year. We do have an opportunity to apply if there is another disaster event, which hopefully not. But if there is another disaster event, those, another declaration of disaster, those hazard mitigation funds would open up again and become available. But the amount that is available to the rest of the state can fluctuate. A couple of years ago, there was only fifty thousand dollars that were left for the rest of the state. So there was nothing that we could do with that amount. This is one of the only times that they're estimating a larger amount.
So one year, twelve months, that's all we have?
No, no, no.
No, no, right now, the one declarat- the declarations-
No, we have to call the declaration first to say we're going to allocate the funds so that she can say, "Council already said, yes, the funds will be there. We're just waiting on your portion now." Now, it's up to them, that can take a year or two.
Yes.
Okay? That is what it is, but we have to do the first step.
Well, I, I just thought maybe the, the website would say you have from this time to this time to file and commit.
No, they, they only talk about it in terms of project period. So we would have up until, we estimated twenty-twenty-one to complete the project. So up until that time, we have, we have the capacity to find the money allocated. We just need a commitment from council at this point.
And that's one of our biggest challenges is that there are grants out there, but we don't have the funds to match the grants. I mean, we can go after tons of grants, but if we don't have the match, I mean, and that's why sometimes we, I mean, that's kind of what holds us back. But I mean, there are grants out there available to us.
So then, we don't necessarily have to have a, an emergency event for, to a disastrous event to access that, those funds. That just means that the city has called for, that it's a disaster and then you can show that, that the city has committed that.
This, this is actually as a consequence of Hurricane Harvey. So Hurricane Ha- Harvey opened those funds up for us.
No, and I guess my, that's my question, we don't have to have a declaration of disaster to proceed these funds? We just have to show that we're committed and we're encumbering that amount of money to be able to, to proceed for the funding.
Yes, and the, the mitigation actions have to match the disaster type. So because Hurricane Harvey was a flood event, our mitigation projects have to be flood mitigation.
So if it's hurricane, we're not eligible, you know, but if it's flood related, we're good to go. We can get our canoes ready. Yes. That's it, just to approve it.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action and approval of Resolution five forty-eight to approve the submission of an application to the Texas Department of Housing Community Affairs for participation in the two thousand seventeen Home Single Family Reservation System Program for persons with disabilities and disaster relief activities. There is no match requirement.
Motion to approve Resolution, to adopt and approve Resolution five forty-eight?
Second.
Okay, so this resolution authorizes us to submit an application to the twenty-seventeen Home Single Family Reservation System Program. We had funds available, we've already managed some of these grant agreements in previous years. This would allow us to apply for twenty-seventeen funds for the Home Rehabilitation Assistance Program and the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program for people with disabilities and for disaster relief activities. Because these are going to target persons with disabilities and disaster relief, there is no match requirement.
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
Yes. Thank you.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to remove Daniel Hernandez from Planning and zoning commission and the Buildings and Standards Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Miss Galos?
So I wanted, I, I mean, I did appoint a Mr. Daniel early in my, when I first came on board and I was hoping that things would get a lot better. I, for a while, they did. And unfortunately, it's, it's very unfortunate where it's, it's gone. So, and I completely agree. I have not spoken to Mr. Hernandez. I was hoping he would be here, but I would just like to tell Mayor that I was waiting, I was going to remove him, I was waiting for Mr. Martinez to give me instructions and I never got the instructions and this way, this is why I did not remove him. But it, I respectfully, next time, just call me and we can work on this together because it is somebody that I appointed. And I'll be working on getting somebody there and hopefully it's a person that will respect our laws and, and see our vision. Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to approve support letter where the City of Socorro pledges to support the initiative that the City of El Paso's Transit Department San Metro grant application to the United States Department of Transportation for the National Infrastructure Bill two thousand and eighteen Transportation Discretionary Grant Program.
Motion to approve the ready letter of support?
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
Yes.
Can we go into executive?
We are sure.
We have a motion.
Motion to go into executive?
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombe Galos?
Yes.
Seven forty-five, we're now in executive?